Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the July 8th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting and call the meeting to order. First, if you have cell phones or pagers, I would ask you to either turn those off or silence them, please. Most of you are familiar faces to us, but if you are not the applicant and you have come to speak to us on a case today, if you would sign one of these little sheets that are available on the table outside the chambers, give them to our secretary, we would be happy to hear you. And with that, we'll go to approval of the June 24th minutes. There are no additions or changes, I will with approval. We have a motion in second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and they're approved. And continuance request, Russell?
We have one uncontested request for continuance, which is item 17, PUD 1416, a request to defer until August the 12th.
Did anyone come to talk to us about that item today? I move to continue item number 17. Motion in second to continue item 17. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
We have three new requests for continuance, item seven, which is PUD 1418, item eight, C 6225, and item 11, C 6221, four requests to continue until August the 12th.
Has anyone come today to talk to us about items seven, eight, or 11 on our agenda? If not...
Move to continue items seven, eight, and 11.
We have a motion to continue the three items. Cast your votes. They're continued. Are there any continuance requests from the public?
No items on the consent docket. On items requiring separate vote, item one is S P U D 567, it's an application by Danny Gassett to rezon 7601 West Hefner Road from P U D 884 to S P U D 567 in Ward 8.
If you give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Dan Gassett, 4253 Hunt Drive in Carrollton, Texas. Good afternoon. I'm coming back before your signing commission to indicate from the old S P U D to the new that we have are complying with all the T E's. We have changed the lots from 11 to 10. We've reduced the curb cuts from four to two on Stony Creek Drive, also going from a public road request to a private, and we have increased the parking from 69 to 91 spaces, which is in compliance with the, I believe, Article 959 or something to that effect.
Commissioners, that addresses at least many of the points that we made two weeks ago. No one has signed up. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it addresses our concerns. I will just have one quick question. You will be plating these as you develop them. Is that correct?
I made discussion with the engineer at this point as to whether we're going to do a full plat or whether we're going to platter as we go.
But they one way or the other, you're going to platter?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I move approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item one. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item two is S P U D 568, which is an application by condominium owners of Cedar Springs Condominiums to rezone at 12351 North May Avenue from R4 on C3 to S P U D 568, Ward 8.
I'm Randy Hill with E.D. Hill Surveying Engineering Company, representing the applicant, and Susan Binkowski, one of the applicants, is here in the chambers as well.
Last time, there was going to be some further discussion with your neighbors, and I at least understand you've tried to include some of the issues that were concerned of the neighbors in your document this time. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We had two meetings with the homeowners association and neighbors, one at Quell Creek Country Club about 10 days ago, and then a subsequent one at Quell Creek Bank this last Tuesday night. And we made numerous revisions to the S P U D in accordance with our discussions with them. We filed those with the city staff, and we're all in accordance, I believe, with the neighbors. And I think they're they also believe that this is the best for the neighborhood, this revised, this S P U D, because what we're really trying to do is to make it possible for more owner-occupied units in this condominium complex. So that's the whole idea of it. And one last thing, and that is Commissioner Gales asked me about making a further change today and to have the underlying district, R3, instead of R4. I analyzed that this morning here with the city staff, and I don't see any problem with that, and so we would request that change also be included as a part of the S P U D.
Nick, anything else with this?
No, we would have that discussion, and I see you agree that that works for them. So I'd move approval of the application with the amendment to underlying R3 zoning.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion in second to approve item two as condition to underlying zone of R3. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item three is PV 71, application by Nest Terms LLC to vacate a portion of the final plat of Preston to delete plat note number 12, Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Brian Kuhn with Kuhn Engineering, representing the applicant, have met with staff numerous times. This plat number 12 was developed, I think, one of those deals that we kind of shot from the hip at the while we were having the plat heard and went with the 70 percent fronts and 15-foot setback if it's a front load or side load garage. We were operating under a previous P U D, which we can't even do the 15-foot because there's a 20-foot utility easement in the front. Staff is having a hard time keeping up the building permits on 7 percent. So it kind of it wasn't a request by them, but when we brought it to them, they said that'd be great because there's no way we can monitor that. We will be utilizing the new, I don't know if it's a policy right now, whatever it was, we came up with our five lot different options. So we'll be utilizing that. We won't be using the 15-foot, obviously, because we have a 20-foot UE. So staff was happy with getting rid of this note because it was just too hard to try to keep up with.
And you have the requisite signatures now, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. No one signed up. We've approved the application. Give a motion in second to approve item three. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
You're approved.
Item four is C 6226, which is the final plat of The Grove South, Phase One, in Ward
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Very Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, Dale Stewart, and Matt Austin with Caliber Development. Our application today seeks the final approval of the final plat of The Grove South, Phase One. This was on a previous docket, which we continue to allow us to meet with staff to address several concerns they had with our application. Since the last docket, myself, Dale Stewart, and Very Lodge have the opportunity to sit down with staff and have addressed the concerns that they had. The staff has recommended approval subject to seven T E's. We are in agreement with the T E's and seek your approval. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioners, there's no one signed up. Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, as the staff report indicates, the final plat's conform with the preliminary. I move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item four. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is C 6212, a preliminary plat of Pleasant Grove in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll Sparks, representing the applicant, and since the previous meeting that this application was continued, the rezoning application has been heard by the city council, at which it was approved and is in place today. Since then, we have well have updated and revised preliminary plat after we heard a few of you all's concerns, so we have resubmitted that. And I will point out that your staff report, the body of your report, is correct as per the updated plat. However, the layout map in the back of your staff report, I believe, is the old layout. So I've given you, that's what I passed out, is the most updated and current layout, and I think that we also on the screen have the new layout there as well. And just to real briefly highlight a couple of the things that we've revised in regards to the plat, if you'll notice, 141st Street as well and Northwest 140th Street, previously were two cul-de-sacs back to the west, but we went ahead and connected those streets up to kind of reduce the number of cul-de-sacs and to increase that connectivity that I know is important to you all. So we've done that, and obviously, we've left only two cul-de-sacs remaining in the addition. We've also, and it on the particular scale we're looking at, it's kind of hard to see, but what we have done is we took the north four streets, and we have included, they're long and they're kind of gentle, but we've included curves in those streets. I won't oversell that, but they do have about a 15-foot offset, so that we think that aesthetically and some other things, if you line up down the road, it'll improve the aesthetics of it and the view coming down the street and help break those things up. Likewise, our previous plat, we had there was some ambiguity in relation to portions of the common area that were recreational versus drainage, so we've kind of revised those on the plat to kind of give you a better understanding of what we're dealing with. And then also, you have another exhibit there on the second sheet that kind of better defines those areas so that you can see what's going on there. So those are a few of the changes. Once again, the zoning's in place. We're in complete compliance with your zoning ordinance, asking for no variances. We're in agreement with all of the T E's, and we'd ask for your approval.
Again, Commissioners, no one has signed up. I move approval of the application. Can I ask you a question?
I do. Since you didn't oversell it, I don't want to over nitpick, but do you have the sense really that this much of an offset is going to make a difference visually?
Oh, yeah. I do think it will make some difference. I don't think, and we don't have quite enough space to add a more exaggerated curve in there. So to answer your question, I think it's somewhere between optimally what I'd like to get in there and probably not having any effect on it at all. So I do think that by adding the curve, even though on a scale this size that it's kind of hard to see, I do think it will help break that up a little bit. Yes.
I find that in some sort of backhanded way, kind of encouraging. I'll be interested to see how it looks when it's built out, and the idea that we have had when we were dealing with this issue, I think, you know, just mentally, you sort of go to a more exaggerated curve, but it would be very encouraging to find that a minimal amount of offset could make a visual impact. I'd like to think that's true.
Okay.
Like I say, when we build this one, we can use it as a test case, I guess.
Bob, you have something?
I do. I'd like it that you eliminated two cul-de-sacs. That was good for the revised plan. But have you given consideration, maybe I misunderstood or didn't hear, for what Mr. Kuhn's just referred to, the garage front committee work and the offsets and the, you know, have you, is this going to be straight garage fronts with a tree planted in front?
What we're doing in regards to your policy is, once again, and understanding the impact of the curves, but we have from your policy put curves in the street. We would agree to moving the trees that we've agreed to to the right of way, given that the utility department permits us to do that.
We talked about that.
And then the third thing that, once again, we're not, it's not a final design, so some of these things are a little bit difficult at this point, but one of the things that's discussed in your policy is grade change as well. In this particular site, as you go to the west, it does tend to fall off a decent amount. So I would suspect that we're going to be able to get some elevation change as we go back to west to kind of add to the overall attempts at mitigating, you know, your concern. So if you look at it, I do think that we've included three options and considerations in regard to your policy. So that's kind of what our attempt is in regards to meeting that and addressing that issue.
And, you know, Janice was talking about, there's a barely discernible curve. You've just got a bare curve that, I mean, you know, if you have an optical, it's going to be a straight line, and to have garage fronts coming out with this dense of a development, it really will be one of these unattractive developments with a dead tree in the front because nobody waters it. The encouragement is, is to really look at that policy about the setbacks and, because you really do have a ton of issues here with a small curve, that's not going to do it. I love the idea of street trees, you know, if you can do that between the curb and the sidewalk. And we've talked about this at that appearance committee, whether or not the public works or water, you know, you need to get with them about where that stuff is, because there was approval on that from them to do street trees. That serves to enhance this neighborhood dramatically if you can do that. But really, the setbacks, the different things you can do, I can't, I can't say that I'm going to vote against this because you comply with the subdivision regulations, but we also worked hard on that policy for garage fronts, and we appreciate giving as much consideration to that with a subdivision development like this. It really will make it a much better place that you can produce for the benefit of the city. So that's my comment.
Any other discussion or comments, Commissioners? No one signed up? Oh, Nick, I'm sorry.
I had moved approval. I think we were waiting on a second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Editorial comment: In neighborhoods where there are street trees, you tend not to look and notice the setback of the houses. I mean, it's just sort of masked.
Item six is C 6204, which is the final plat of Einstein, Phase One, in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Ritchie with Civil Design and Survey of Oklahoma, here on behalf of the applicant. Pleased to say we can agree with T E's 1, 2, 6, 7, 10, and 11. T E's 3, 4, and 8 have been satisfied just this week since you received your packets by additional submittals. We would ask that T E's 5 and 9 be reserved for resolution through the engineering process and prior to the acceptance of the dedications by the council and run concurrently with the construction of the project.
As a reminder, Commissioners, we did not approve the zoning for this nor the preliminary plat at our last meeting.
Actually, the zoning was in place.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Preliminary plat, my mistake.
In that regard, Mr. Chairman, a question for counsel. I, in my years on this commission, I don't believe we've ever seen a final plat after we have denied the preliminary plat without a change.
That's probably true. The preliminary path, though, is really just a method by which the applicant can get some instruction from the commission on how they're going to view their case. They have a right to be heard on their final plat, so that's what they've elected to do. Ordinarily, people will amend the plat to comply with the requirements of the preliminary, but they have a right to be heard on their final plat.
Or they would withdraw. That'd be their other option, I suppose.
Tell me again which ones are going to be, you're asking, be reserved?
Items five and nine that deal with off-site easements, I don't, oh, here it is. The western entryway, which we're renaming as a part of item six, it'll be, it'll now be called Burning Iron Boulevard. It's a multi-use entryway meant to serve as the second entry for Phase One, the primary entry for the future apartment track, and a back entry for the frontage, the commercial frontage out here on Portland. And because it falls outside, it falls outside the plat boundary because it's a different zoning, and it was my understanding at the time that that should be outside the plat since it was a different zoning. I've since been told by staff that it could have as easily been included inside the boundary and not caused an issue, so it's really semantics. We know we're going to build that road. All the submittals have been turned in as far as construction plans and that kind of thing, and we're amenable to even paying the application fee in arrears if that's necessary. The application fee's $1,400. But it really falls in the same category as right here at the southwest corner of the development. There's a sewer easement that comes straight west and then down the alignment and then crosses this future alignment for the highway. These sewer plans for serving this development are the half-mile of sewer, those plans are approved, just waiting construction and work order issuance. That easement also has not been submitted to the city. It's customary for these off-site easements to just happen during construction, be granted, dedicated, filed of record, and then we check the box before we go to the city council. We don't get to build, we don't get to build building permits or anything until those easements are in place and the utilities, or in this case, the roadway are, roadways are built and final inspected. So those are the two that we're asking to just reserve for future resolution.
Nick? I thought you had something.
If there are no...
Well, we do have someone signed up.
Okay.
Welcome back. I didn't miss you this time. Commissioners, Randall Fudge, 16316 Dustin Lane. I didn't think I was going to be here, otherwise I would have put a coat and tie on for you all. I had assumed that a prerequisite to approval for the final plat would have been approval of the preliminary plat, and those two previous preliminary plats have been unanimously denied by this commission. So I was surprised to learn that this was still on the agenda. Nothing's changed in two weeks. The infrastructure of 164th is still inadequate for this subdivision, and I just stress that nothing's changed in two weeks, so I would urge denial of the final plat.
Well, if it's any consolation, we've not had this occur in all our years on the commission either, and we just heard our municipal counselor explain to us that the applicant has the right to be heard, which, so we were a bit surprised ourselves not having been confronted with this exact situation before.
And that same assumption was, I can tell you, was made by the other people that signed that petition of protest and the people that were here two weeks ago.
We understand.
Thank you.
Nick?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Fudge said, nothing has changed. We've denied the preliminary plat now twice because of the inadequate infrastructure. It hasn't changed. I've moved for denial.
Second. We have a motion in second to deny item six. Cast your votes. It is denied.
Items seven and eight have been continued until August the 12th. Item nine is S P U D 565, an application by Accord OKC Members LLC to rezone 6446 North Penile Avenue from R4 to S P U D 565 in Ward 1.
Melissa Wheeler, 3060 Northwest 41st. This item was continued from the June 24th meeting, in which the council requested more information based on some of the protests you received. That information was actually sent to the city offices, and hopefully you do have it. We have consolidated the hours even since that email went to the city. The pavilion building itself, which is where the building we're asking for, is now closing at 9:00 PM. So any alcohol or mixed beverages being served would stop at 9:00 PM. I did make an effort. I personally went to every door on College, that's 30 homes, and 60 doors, which consists of 30 duplexes on Penile, in an effort to bring the residents to our facility to determine, to let them see what we're doing. We had minimal turnout, but I did, I can say that in at least one case, one of the protesters actually signed the petition and wrote the commission a letter, has actually reversed their protest and has actually signed a support letter in support, which I can provide to the commission as soon as I'm done speaking. As well, a lot of the protest has, protesters have said that they are unanimously protesting this decision. In reviewing the petition, I have discovered that although there are 41 signatures, that actually only encompasses 29 residences on College and Penile. Out of those, basically, there's 120 residents living on those two streets. That means there's still 80 residents that absolutely have no protest against the commission's decision to approve this. As well, there's been a lot of issues about the traffic, of which I just need to make aware that in 1972, when the property was built, the infrastructure was already there for the 800 homes, units that encompasses the property, in addition to the 90 residences on College and Penile. In the building that we're asking for this to be placed in has always been the center of the property. It has always, since 1972, been a leasing center, been a club room, and had different activities going through there. I honestly don't feel that an increase in traffic will occur, especially since we have converted one of our 800 units, bringing the total revenue producing units down to 799, into an actual leasing office off of 63rd Street, which means that any person wanting to view apartment homes do not have to go to the Penile address, they can go to the 63rd Street address. I'll be more open to any questions.
Let me ask you one or two here. You're wanting to have the beverage service in conjunction with meal service?
Correct.
Would you then rule out Saturday night and Sunday night liquor sales?
We do not do any dinner service on Sunday night at all. On Saturday evening from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, we would be doing beverage service at that time, but it's only for those two hours that we would be doing, doing that.
And as I read your submittal to Mr. Gross, the events you refer to would be events, they'd be residence-only events, correct?
That is correct. Was it a guest, and corporate guests and residents only of the 63rd Street area. You know, currently, when we have an event, as with any other apartment community, the residents are allowed to bring their own beverages with them. I completely feel that with us having the power to oversee the beverage sales, that it would actually contain any problems that may currently exist. Obviously, we will have a licensed bartender, licensed through the ABLE Commission. Our courtesy patrol staff will be enrolled in a September class of a alcohol intervention class given through the standard, or security officer's requalification office in Oklahoma City. So we are taking steps to make sure that anything that is going through there will be oversaw by licensed people.
Well, you would have had my vote until we got to events that don't relate to residents. I think that was a good deal of what the protest was about. I know that that's of concern to Commissioner Hensley, who isn't here today, and I know it's of concern to City Councilman Marsen, whose ward you reside. So to me, if you were willing to limit the beverage sales to the days of meal sales and events to resident-only events, I would be in support.
I will be more than happy to do that.
Now, I haven't talked to any other Commissioners, so I mean, I've, that's my view, and now I'd like to hear from everyone else.
Well, Mike, when I read the protest letters, it seemed to me that your problem with the residents, both on both streets, Penile and what's the other one?
College.
Yeah. Is that you've got golf carts and, you know, buses going up and down, up and down, up and down, none of which is related to what the application is about. It's that...
Correct.
You haven't controlled, you haven't controlled the traffic with what you're doing right now.
Correct.
And then what Commissioner Yocel just alluded to is that when this might be for, well, like me, for instance, who doesn't live anywhere close, you're going to have a party at your clubhouse, I can go. I wouldn't, I wouldn't increase the traffic because that's increasing the traffic. If you're dealing, if you, what you just said, just residents, but you've got, I mean, I think that maybe you have, have an effort to make to become a better neighbor with these people that live in the neighborhood, with reducing the number of golf cart trips, with reducing the number of the bus, whatever you're doing, and the parking, et cetera. You're really reading the neighborhood letters. You haven't been a very good neighbor to these people that live there.
Well, I respectfully disagree. I mean, because of the increase in the property values, we, from our renovation alone, the property values have went up an average of $9,000 this... this last year. That's being a pretty good neighbor. The police department alone, I have several police officers, one of whom I hoped would be here to speak today, has actually voiced their approval, the reduction in crime in our area. The buses that are being alluded to are buses that are specifically for the Federal Aviation Administration. As we all know, they have the only academy in the nation here in Oklahoma City, and we do have a lot of FAA guests that stay in our corporate rooms. They're here anywhere from 30 days to 120 days.
Yeah, right.
The academy provides a shuttle, so they don't have to drive. Most of them come here from as far away, we have some from Brazil, actually, right now. They don't bring cars with them. The shuttle provides them with, or I'm sorry, the academy provides them with a shuttle service, which does pick up three times a day in front of the pavilion and takes them to the academy, and then, of course, drops them off three times a day as well.
I like the idea of shuttle buses. That's, I mean, it really is a nice thing. But, but again, when I was reading the protest letters, it was all about parking, traffic, and then you bring a bar that's open to everybody else. Well, that's where I came from, the same with Commissioner Yocel.
Well, let's understand, it's not a bar. We are not doing any outside sales whatsoever. In fact, we're not even going to take cash. We can't take cash.
Same.
I will tell you that in an effort to assist the parking after the first meeting, we have eliminated, eliminated all employee parking in front of that, in front of that facility. All employee parking is across the bridge, across the lake, and they walk over, which is maybe, at best, a quarter of a mile if that. So we have eliminated all of that. So currently, we only have guests that park in front of the facility.
Yeah, right.
Well, yeah, this is sort of a unique business model in Oklahoma City. I mean, I think it's, you know, different than most, most other kinds of apartment complexes we might see in terms of the fact that they've got these long-stay provisions. I mean, if this was a residence inn and they had a restaurant in there and they wanted to serve alcohol with meals, we wouldn't think twice. We'd say, "That's fine, go ahead and do it. It's a hotel," even if it's an extended-stay hotel. They've, I mean, I went and looked at it initially because I was really curious about this application. I didn't understand it. And they've put a lot of money into the facility. It's now occupied as opposed to maybe 30 or 40% occupied. Yeah, that success of the project is going to mean there's going to be more activity around it, and that's a good thing. We applaud that. That's what we want to see happening in the city. I think, as respects this application, we just want to have it relate to the business of their business and not have it become a public venue. And I, as I understand what Ms. Wheeler is saying, she's agreeable to doing that. Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that. And, you know, if it was a residence inn, where they put residence inns, sure, we'd approve it. But this is nestled into a residential area. If they want to provide alcohol to their residents, they can do that without an ABC-2. They just can't sell it to them. That's what they want to do.
Well, you are correct in that. I mean, we are a business like any other business.
I understand. But you're asking for a 17,500-square-foot ABC-2 overlay in a residential area. If I approve the residence inn, typically, we do the restaurant areas.
Right.
We don't do the whole hotel.
And if I may also comment, that 17,000-square-foot number is not correct any longer. That included the tennis courts. We did remove the tennis courts, and it scaled down to the pavilion building only, which is approximately 7,000 square feet. In that 7,000 square feet also houses a conference room, which will not be part of this. It also houses our corporate offices and licensed massage therapists and estheticians. So in the end, the space that we're talking about may be 3,000 square feet.
And what is the name of that space?
I'm sorry, could you...
What is the name of that space?
We call it the Pavilion.
That 3,000 square feet?
Correct. That, that's what we consider the Pavilion, which is encompassed, which encompasses the spa and the esthetician services and the conference room.
So we would be talking about the dining area portion of the pavilion building, which is approximately 3,000 square feet, and that's now the application, as I understand.
Correct.
And we, okay, so we narrowed down to that 3,000 square feet of the dining space on...
Right, where dinner service is held, which is in the upstairs, I know you gentlemen haven't been there, but it's in the upstairs portion of the Pavilion. Again, a portion of that upstairs encompasses a front desk set up and a conference room. So it's not even the entirety of the upstairs portion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like Commissioner Gales, my concern about this application has to do with the location of the facility. I, I think the idea of it is neat. I think it's probably a great transition for this air, for this facility and the use of it. I mean, nobody wants to see it sitting there empty or deteriorating. It seems to me like the kind of services that they're providing makes perfect sense. My only concern about it has to do with the fact that it sits on a residential street. And the fact that over time, you know, the zoning runs with the land, and over time, all those specific conditions and the, the process of negotiation to eliminate the impact of, of an ABC-2 gets watered down, filtered, forgotten, whatever. This is, this is a difficult choice for me. It really is. But I don't think that we would put a residence inn in this location. There's just no way. And so the fact that we would approve this kind of service in a hotel without giving it too much of a thought is not particularly persuasive to me. My concern is about whether this is a good use at this location. And at this facility, I think it is, but the location of the facility gives me some real pause.
Well, I, I think if it was open to the public, I would, I've obviously said I wouldn't be the least bit interested in supporting it. But a lot of the residents would just, they'll be walking across one of two bridges that, across a lake that go from where the apartments are to have dinner. They're, they're walking to their meal anyway. They're not getting, they don't have a car, for the most part. 80% of the people who are in that facility are FAA people. They're not driving cars. They're walking across.
And I agree with all that.
And I understand.
It's so use-specific. I mean, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, that zoning will still be there.
Well, I can't tell you that our owner, the owner of the Accord, has designed this property to hold on to for the long term. This is simply not a case of an out-of-state owner who wants to flip it in five years. His goal is for his grandchildren to still be managing this property. He's made, he's made such an impact on that area that he's actually currently pursuing other neglected, severely neglected properties in the area as well to try, to turn them around. We have done nothing without always permission from, if not this commission, from, from another entity. We have followed the letter of the law through the entire renovation and even up through now. So I don't, as far as I'm concerned, there will never be any, just sneaking anything through. We will, okay.
Well, and we'll, I mean, if we approve it as it's now presented to us, we do have limited hours of operation, the limited ability to deal only with residents who are in this facility. And we will probably have vigilant neighbors as well. So, I mean, you can't foresee all circumstances with all properties as we consider and zone them, but I at least would support this. So whatever's the pleasure of the commission at this point.
Are there protests?
There's no one signed up.
Then in that event, let me make a motion to approve the application, with the revisions in the application, that the ABC-2 overlay is limited to the, what, 3,000-square-foot pavilion? Is that the downstairs?
The dining area.
The dining area only, and that the service of alcoholic beverages is restricted on Saturday just from, from four to six, and then none on Sunday?
Correct.
Is that it?
No. We want to limit events to residents only, and I did not want to have alcoholic beverages on Saturday without meals. In other words, I wanted to limit it to the days when meals are served.
That...
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. On that basis, I move approval of the application.
You'd also mention 9:00 PM instead of 10:00?
Yeah, 4:30 to 9:00 PM.
And then the 9:00 PM, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item, what's my item number now? Nine. As conditioned, cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is ABC-717, an application by David Dunn for an ABC-2 overlaying C-3 Community Commercial at 8139 Northwest 10th Street, Ward 1.
Thank you. I'm David Dunn, 1124 North Markwell. We were here two weeks ago, and at this point, I don't believe there's any protest. I've met with the friends of Northwest 10th Street. I've had a letter sent in by the House of Kawasaki, which is the largest dealership, the largest business up on our street. We, I had an unsolicited, uh, letter sent in by 40 homeowners in the area supporting it, and if, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay. No, no one has signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 has been continued until August the 12th. Item 12 is an application by Please and Geraldine Dye to rezone 3700 Southeastern from I-1 Single Family to I-2 Modern Industrial in Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Fox, 522 Hawk Court Drive. Our application today seeks to rezone the subject property from R1 to I-2. As the handout makes its way around the horseshoe, you'll note that the area that the subject property sits in is a heavy industrialized area with I-3 and I-2 as the common zoning uses. We feel that the I-2 use is appropriate for the area. The staff has recommended approval, and we seek your approval today. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. I move approval of the application. We have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is an ordinance related to Planning and Zoning Code, amending chapter 59. This addresses the EMD signs in the design districts. This was introduced at the last meeting.
Commissioners, any discussion? We need a motion to approve this item. Most to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and it is approved. Likewise, we need a motion to approve item 14. Russell, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Item 14 is another ordinance that relates to signs. This is signs in the downtown district, and this is also, this amends chapter 3 of the code.
Only with approval? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes.
Item approved. Item 15 is to set for hearing an ordinance related to zoning and planning, amending chapter 59 of the code. This concerns discretionary review procedures.
And we need a motion to introduce and set for hearing in August.
I move to introduce and set.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 16 is consideration of the airport strategic development program, and the request is to be received by the Planning Commission.
We need a motion to...
Just a motion to receive.
Motion to receive the report.
Move a motion to receive this report.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to receive item 16. Cast your votes, and that is approved. Planning Commission committees? Planning Commission members, any items?
Any election?
Collection of officers?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that there is a obligation in the Planning Commission to elect officers in discussions with Commissioner Hensley, who's not here, who's the current vice chairman, and in discussions with the current chairman. Mr. Hensley, who would be the normal, would be the normal and appropriate applicant for serving as chairman, respectfully request that he remains as vice chairman. And in that regard, even though I understand through the bylaws that there is a obligation on our part to consider new chairman as every year passes, that in connection with Commissioner Hensley's work that he's doing right now that kind of prevents him from being here and, you know, doing chairman's duty, I would like to place into nomination for Vice Chairman, Commissioner Michael Hensley, and for Chairman, Commissioner John Yocel.
Other nominations? No? Do we need a motion to waive the bylaws first?
They're probably best, yes.
I'll move to waive the bylaws with regard to the, this.
Okay. A motion and a second to waive the bylaws. Cast your votes. Motion on the nominations? Cast your votes.
Should we applaud?
No, no, no. Dan, I think we need to draft an amendment to allow the commission to waive bylaws. I'm not sure that technically we've, we've got that ability.
We will do that.
Planning Department?
I don't have any items.
I do not have any items.
Good. Oh, kidding. Development Services, JJ? Dan?
No.
Citizens to be heard in the back. Thank you for being here. Other business? Motion to adjourn?
I'll move second.
And that's approved. We're adjourned.